Morning, I'm just doing a sound check.
Good morning, Martin. We can hear you.
Very loud and clear.
I can go quieter if you want.
Okay, one minute, one minute warning. Martin, are you still with us? Okay, thanks. We have a quorum. Okay, this call the Committee of the Hall special meeting to order for November 6, 2025. We have confirmation of quorum. And we'll call the meeting to order. And we acknowledge that we're on the traditional territory of the Lakewoodak people. Adoption of the public agenda, that the agenda for November 6, 2025 special meeting of the Committee of the Hall be adopted as presented.
Second?
Director Barker, Director Von Ash, Baker. Sorry, all in favor? Carried. There's no petitions or delegations, adoption of the minutes. It's moved and seconded. Call in favor, opposed, carried. There's no business arising. Staff reports, the Heritage Conservation Act Transformation Project will passes to the CAO and oh, sorry, move receipt.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So there's a whole lot of reading material in here and a timeline of the history of the province's path to amending the Heritage Conservation Act. So I don't have, you know, I can't summarize what's in there. You can see there's pages and pages and pages of stuff. I think the most valuable information was in the Heritage Conservation Act Transformation Project, the update Phase 3 session. There's, I think they've summarized the number of questions in there quite well from all the correspondence. I, as you'll seen, I included my answer to the CEO survey in there. I was obviously quite neutral in that. Every answer I basically put in there that we need more information on it. And what didn't show up there when I printed it was my comments. And I'll tell you, on every single comment I put in there, I said consultation through the CEO survey, I think, is a very poor way of doing consultation because A, you're asking the CEO and the CEO may not, you know, know or represent what the board is. And the questions in there really required a response of the board, not the CEO. So that, I put that on every single one. You can see they have a phased approach that they've outlined here of what they've done. It looks to encompass a very long timeline. However, the activities within that have been, you know, sparse at best. And now it seems to be trying to culminate with a bunch of work effort seminars here at the very end. I will say that we got feedback from the province that the CAO survey was very poorly responded to. So they didn't get a great response from that. And upcoming, so we have opportunities here in terms of what are suggested in the, the act. We have registered all the directors for the session tomorrow. I anticipate there should be dozens and dozens, if not hundreds of elected officials on that call. We tried to provide as much information for you to make comment on and we have the ability to provide feedback to the province by November 14. So the intent of this meeting is to provide folks with all the information, generate any comments that the board collectively has. And then staff will respond to the province summarizing those concerns as well. If things come to light tomorrow, for those of you that are on that, that want to forward those on further about what collectively, I think, maybe it can be represented through the chair of the committee, about other things who may want to include in the corp, in the correspondence to the province. So it's November 6 today. We're here. November 7 is the, the online webinar they're having. And then the 14th is the, the last date they currently have for providing that input. So what we're trying to do here is inspire, receive any information comments that folks have on these Heritage Conservation Act amendments and consolidate them together in some response to the province.
Director Von Ash.
Thank you, Chair. So, so just to summarize, what we're doing here today is, is we're sort of sharing our thoughts on, on different aspects of it. Staff are recording those thoughts and we're going to pass that on to the province. Is that right?
Yeah, so again, we'll, we'll consolidate the feedback here and the intent is to provide our comments from the board to the province by the 14th. So, yeah. As well, if things inspire you tomorrow, I think what we can do through the chairs consolidate what those concerns comments are and add those as well.
Director Davis, I think you're next. Then we have some other people lined up here. So Director Davis, go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Chair. I guess, as you guys probably know, I have sort of a unique perspective on some of this and the, I'm a caver. I go in caves. I've done research over the years. We've identified many, many cultural sites around caves. And so I do have some concerns around that. A lot of it's around data and data collection. As far, I, I'm not really aware of a good database that they maintain. I know I've tried to submit information in the past and how it's collected is spotty. Enforcement of the Heritage Act in, in terms of these places. There's, there's stuff on paper, but you're not even going to know about it if you go in a cave or whatever. I, I think they should have signage, some sort of conservation-related signage that can be used for those specific sites. Like several years ago, I developed signage for sensitive bat hibernation sites for caves and they were deployed across BC. But there's nothing equivalent in this case. Like, I've been in caves that have major butcher sites for animals, pictographs on the walls, things like that. And in some cases, these caves are freely visited, but there, there's, there's nothing about the conservation of them or, you know, in, in terms of talking about protection and the value of these sites to be left undisturbed. So I'm interested in securing sites, I guess, is partly what I'm saying. Another is that the BC Speliological Federation, which I'm part of, maintains a database of caves across British Columbia. And we have different classifications of caves and you can, you can search it based on what you're looking for. So any First Nations heritage sites have a certain classification. Now, we have no protocol in, in place for sharing this data with the government. We've tried to develop protocols over the years and we've gotten nowhere because the government is constantly shifting, different people coming and going. So there, there's really no means of sharing that data in a meaningful way. And also security of data is really important when you do these sort of things because of the sensitivity of sites. I realize a lot of archaeological sites involve what's under the ground when they dig. And that's what a lot of this would be addressing, like development. But it would be good to have some protocols around security of data. Obviously, we as municipalities need access to that data. So that if there's known archaeological sites and then somebody proposes a development permit on that area, it should be immediately flagged. But it has to be in a way that it's secure so that the data isn't just out there in the public domain because then you could have problems with people digging and plundering these sites. And I've seen this many, many times over the years. So I, I guess those are some of my concerns about that. And I'm also wondering if, if this stuff should be flagged in, in our OCPs as well. I'm not talking about naming specific sites, but just as, as values that need to be addressed. I think that's, oh, the other thing is the whole thing around qualified archaeologists, like I've known people that have worked in archaeology that have dropped out of it because there was really, there wasn't really the funding to do the kind of meaningful work that they needed to do. And I know that's already been brought up in this document, so I, I thought I'd just flag that as well. Another thing is, for decades, our Caving Federation has tried to get a Cave Protection Act for BC, which addresses this specifically, protection of, of features such as this. But we have never gotten any traction with it, with the government. They, they show no interest in doing that. But that would go a long ways towards also helping to protect those sort of sites. And, yeah, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Director Davis. Then we have Director Coburn, and then we have Director Mowini. Oh, you don't want to talk? Okay.
I do mimic, I do agree with some of the concerns that Director Davis brought up. Through, there needs to be some kind of mechanism through lands to have some kind of centralized data collection. There, there just has to be. It kind of reminds me of, you know, blanking, blanket housing ledge that doesn't work for everybody. And the thing that strikes me the most with this, I understand the need for preservation of sensitive archaeological finds. But the, the, the first comment in this is to, they're hoping to achieve a reduced administrative burden, which this is the exact opposite of, in my view. And to help people rebuild quicker. I, I don't think that going through these processes on top of what is already expected when you're rebuilding after disaster is as time-saving. So tho- those are my, my main basic comments. I'll leave it there for now. But I think if you're trying to reduce administrative burden and help things move quickly, adding added burdens on to homeowners, regional districts, that doesn't accomplish that. So, yes, I absolutely understand the need to recognize archaeological, archaeologically important sites. I, I just, there, there needs to be some help from the province to do that in place before this happens. It's, it's cart before the horse.
Matthew Jack.
Yes, thank you. And I just come from a forum with the BC Cabinet and First Nations Leadership in Vancouver. This is one of the topics that was, was there and so I spoke to Herlands and Resources, Jeff Nielsen, and this is what I got from him. KCFN has been consulted through the Alliance of BC Modern Treaty Nations on potential changes that BC is considering to the Heritage Conservation Act, which regulates the treatment of heritage features and objectives in BC, private land and crown treaty lands. KCFN, KCFN's position has been that heritage features on the landscape, landscape should be respected and that includes consulting with the owner of these features in, in relation to any development. KCFN's Heritage Act regulates heritage features on KCFN treaty lands. So I, I believe our work with other modern treaty nations adequately, adequately addresses our issues with potential update to the Heritage Conservation Act. However, the SRD recognizing the importance of the First Nations authority over their own heritage places, places would be a helpful step. And there's, there's been, yeah, there's been quite a bit of work among the, the treaty nations and we've we all have our own acts in place for our, our own treaties, but we're working together to with BC and to align, you know, to align them all and hopefully, you know, help, help BC with, with building the Heritage Act or amending it, if that may be the case. But like, cause ours has been developed. It's not enacted yet. We just, we're finalizing some things on it, but, you know, we're, we're just waiting for some feedback from the, the treaty society of, Treaty Alliance of BC. So but, yeah, we have, we have a lot of work going on, you know, and then, like I said, we're, we're working with BC ministers and then hopefully we'll see a, a good outcome. Just in regards to, to ours, it's, we tried to make it so that's, it's an easy process, especially when it comes to private lands and crown lands and make that process easier, if you know, like for any, any changes on, on the land, like if anything's found and, you know, whether it's a heritage site or there, you know, there, there's some artifacts or something in the ground or things like that. And that's there's, there's things in there that, that take care of that and help move, move things along, especially when it comes to forestry and, and logging, like, things like that. We've, we've done a lot of development in that area as well, as, as a treaty nation. And so we'll be sharing all of that information with BC. We have another forum coming up and then it'll be on, I believe it'll be on the island next year, which would be really cool. Thank you.
Question, Director Jack, what about the non-treaty nations?
Again, a, a lot of them are developing. Their, their acts and things like that, and a lot of it is aligning, you know, they're trying to align with, with treaty nations as well. Just streamlined and everything. So, you know, we can go through and when we discuss with BC and just to, to try and move things along as smoothly as possible. And yeah, just so that's nice and easy for everybody, not just First Nations. And, you know, it's that's, yeah, that's my take on it.
Thank you. Next is Director Rice.
Thank you, Chair. I've got some different concerns because we're actually dealing with this in the community where when I started exploring into this, there's been a lot of questions that even with the changes to the Heritage Act, that they can't seem to answer. And give you a bit of a scenario, in Area D, there was a hydro pole changed on the highway. During the, the changing of that hydro pole, which was on, you know, MOT right away, they found something that in turn flagged five properties. Those property owners were never notified because apparently, you know, privacy rules. There is no information that Hydro can provide that triggered this, this whole process. So we don't even know what is the threshold that triggers something that in turn flags properties. One of the property, sorry, three of the property owners wish to develop. They're in the dark right now because they don't know what is the process to clear their properties. And that is concerning because, again, they are not aware that their properties were even flagged until they went to obtain a development permit. That really puts a lot of pressure on development because at this point in time, when you're ready to pull a development permit, you've already got your financing in place. You've already got your preferred builders in place. Now all of a sudden, you've put that entire thing on hold. You start pursuing information with the province, it's almost impossible to get information. They're very slow at responding back. And the take that I have from the people that are dealing with this is they're concerned with what is going to be the cost to even get their properties to the point where they can safely develop. The other issue that I have is that when I looked at some of the changes that they are proposing with the act, they actually want to make mandatory regulation that every property owner in BC is now going to be required to do an assessment of their property before they can even put a for sale sign on it. And I don't see how that's going to work considering that, you know, the, the whole department, the heritage department is already overworked for what they're trying to do. And the other issue that I have is that when I try to get answers, they cannot tell me, again, with the threshold of what triggers an event that actually flags these properties. And to me, it's an ever-changing landscape. Give you a prime example. Let's say, for example, I decide to sell my house and I go through the steps of getting it verified that there's no heritage interest. Well, according to the way that I see things working with the province, if one of my neighbors does something and they uncover something, that turns around and triggers all of the neighboring properties. So it's, it's, it's almost like, well, where do we, you know, stop this and say, we're good or we're not good? And again, these things are always changing. And the worst part is the uncertainty for property owners. I mean, I'm all for protecting heritage sites, but, you know, we also have to go back and take a look at, you know, this is becoming quite a burden now on private property owners, not just big development. So those are my comments.
So, Mr. Chair, I just have a question, if I may, to Director Jack. I'm just curious. One of the things we found boots on the ground here that's having an impact is there, you mentioned forestry and there's kind of some, I don't want to say exceptions, but acknowledgement of, you know, forestry lands there. Has there been much talk about import fill material? And because one of the things that we find here, and it's similar to what Director Rice has spoken to, but impacts in other areas. I'm not an expert on this, but like it, it, I would, my suggestion, it needs to be addressed, is that a lot of the roadwork that's been done historically, whether it's Cortez, you know, Denman, Campbell River, whatever, a lot of fill material has been brought in over the years, decades ago. And then we've encountered the instances where, you know, during construction of something, something has been, you know, revealed or dug up. But that material was fill material. And, and then having the implications of a, a cultural heritage site identified there. So I'm just curious if there's been any discussion in terms of addressing fill material in rights of way mostly, because I mean, highways for decades has brought fill material in for all kinds of places.
Yeah, that, that's an interesting, I, I believe when, when we were going through ours, we had a lot of similar concerns, you know, that what's been spoken just, just for ourselves and, but on, on fill that's been brought in. That's something I'd have to ask Jeff Nielsen, who's our Land and Resources. He has much more knowledge on it than, than I do, but we do have a lot of stuff in place in, in our own act that kind of deals with a lot of the, a lot of that. And through our development, we follow our, our own Heritage Place Act when we find something as well. And we've gone through, you know, with, with what was the name of the company, for, for the, the hydro poles coming and, you know, and having to move lines around and, and things like that. And it was a there was an expense there. It wasn't totally huge, but yeah, that's something I'd have to ask Jeff, but I'm pretty sure we have, we, we tried to touch on everything and, and things like that. So yeah, we're just in the finalizing stages of, of enacting ours. And, but if that's something you want me to look into, I can do that and, and ask Jeff.
Yeah, no, I think it's, it's a concern. Well, it, I think it needs to be addressed one way or the other because the fact is, especially as specifications and we're not nearly what they are now for, let's say, road nearly what they are now for, let's say, road building, but you know, there's, there's roads everywhere. There's just been a ton of fill brought in to build roads and within, you know, roads right of way. And some of that material, well, you know, it's been brought in from other areas, could be from First Nations land or, you know, could be from cultural heritage sites and then it's brought there. And, and what we're finding is a lot of it's within the road right of way. And I'm, I don't have a solution, I'm just saying, I think it's important that it's being addressed because otherwise, you know, for all the road right aways, you know, they're, they're going to be declared at some point in time or could be a cultural heritage site because this material is brought from one place, put into the other. And, and in the road right ways, unlikely the, the true culturally sensitive area, right? I just think it's something that needs to be addressed. And I don't know if it is in here or not, like there's, there's so much within here and I'm not an expert on it, but I know that's an issue that we've had, like Director Rice is talking about, let's say, a pole, I don't know how long a pole lasts, but let's say it lasts, you know, 30, 40, 50 years. And so it's been put in maybe in the seventies and then storm comes and it's pushed over, the hydro crew goes in there, needs to replace the pole. And in replacing it, they go, oh, there's a shell or a mitten or whatever's there. And then it's declared culturally sensitive area, right? And it's like, okay, is it? Or, you know, that was fill material that was brought in 50 years ago from somewhere.
Yeah, no, that's, that's an excellent question and for sure, I'll, I'll follow up on that and try and get more info. Our nation, we, we have our own archaeologist and she's quite knowledgeable in that area, so I can approach her too. And she helped develop our Heritage Place Act and stuff like that. So yeah, I'll, I'll follow up on that and then hopefully I can give you an answer.
Thank you. So we have Director Mawhinney and then we have Director Davis.
Thank you Chair. This is a really interesting conversation. I'm really happy to be hearing all the different perspectives. I was really curious what I, what I was going to hear today. I have a few thoughts and I think overarching for me is that hopefully that there is enhanced decision-making that is empowered by this Heritage Conservation Act for First Nations. And I think that that would be a really beneficial and respectful outcome of this transformation of this act. There's a, I do have some additional comments. There's something that's being added to the Heritage Conservation Act around confidentiality of Indigenous knowledge and, and their data about their locations. And I'm really happy to see that that is being included because I think if there was to be a publicly accessible map of all of the potential heritage conservation sites, I think that it runs the risk of those sites being disturbed or looted or, or something. So I'm happy to see that. I know that one of the questions it says is like, when, what should be considered when they may need to disclose heritage data? And I don't have an answer for that, but I would hope that they're consulting the nations with that. And through my seat at the Marine Planning Partnership Table, I've learned that it's extremely challenging for First Nations to be able to renovate a clam garden, which has been their historic way of like feeding themselves and, or even if they're in one of their heritage area and they could see an artifact, which is maybe coming out of a bank or on the beach, they're not, not allowed to collect it without a lot of paperwork. And I think that this act is actually going to remove some of those barriers for the nations and I'm really happy to see that because I think that's really important, that they have access to their, the sites that, that are theirs. I do, I'm curious about the archaeological regulation that, that is being proposed in here. I, I understand that, that there might be significant benefits to that, however, I am a little concerned that that could be further colonization of that archaeological profession. And that's just because I really feel that nations may have their own people or processes for determining who is doing the archaeology for them. And if it becomes managed solely by the province, that that may take that, that decision-making power away from the nation. And the other thing that I'm curious about is a framework or, or consideration, and I didn't see it in here and like CIO Dave Leach has said, there's a lot of words and a lot of pages that we were provided, so it could have been in here somewhere and I didn't see it. But really like in an area where there's overlapping nations' interests, is there a collaborative process for coming up with a resolution if say, there's a site and there's overlapping interests and those overlapping interests have different opinions? So yeah, I think that sums up the thoughts I've had so far.
Director Davis, you're next.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Yeah, this is a really interesting conversation. I can see it going off in a lot of different directions. Just one quick, quick thing I wanted to flag, like if, if a dig is happening and you find shells there, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's anything to do with First Nations use. Like for instance, on the east side of Vancouver Island, oh, up to about 50, maybe 70 meters above sea level, you can find shells when they dig out ground, like I've seen this. And that's because that was below the ocean at one point. So I'm just saying that, that's a further complicating factor, you know, isostatic rebound raises the ground. So, so you can see that sort of evidence that has nothing to do with First Nations. So that's just one comment. Another thing I'm curious about is if, it's going to be mandated that any site that's coming up for development needs to be assessed by archaeologists and that's, that is really going to be, stifle a lot of development. And I think the government is, if they want us to do this, they, they need to come up with funding and have archaeologists trained that they can go in and assess sites. And even then, what does that mean? Does it mean you're going to go in and do test digs or is it going to be based on probabilities of use? Because you know, you, you can do that to a certain degree, develop probabilities, not that they're necessarily going to be accurate, but it is iterative over time that you can learn more about that. But I'm, I'm also concerned that if the onus is put on the developer at all times to flag their own site, if they're doing excavations and then they find evidence of archaeological use, that they, they may be inclined to suppress that because the, the costs are going to go through the roof and potentially kill the development. So that's, that's a disincentive for, for people to reveal that there, there is some indications of past use of that site. So the government is going to have to come up with a funding mechanism and train people and have it happen in, you know, a reasonable amount of time, like not over years, otherwise it's going to become impossible for people to build houses or dig a well or whatever development they want to do. And, and certainly that's a concern to most people, that costs for everything are going through the roof and we keep layering bureaucracy on it. So this is going to be another layer of bureaucracy. So if we're going to do this, they're, they're going to have to come up with a funding mechanism that doesn't put the onus entirely on the landowner. Thanks.
We have Director Coburn and Director Van Ash.
And also I think that needs, what needs to be included in this in a funding kind of mechanism is capacity building for nations. So we're asking all this extra work, all these extra considerations, but we know that, you know, these are peoples that are, that are inventing, they're not inventing, they're re-recognizing their own ways of governance. That's a, that's a process, that's a long, you know, and, and so, yeah, along with that funding for, you know, training and for, you know, you've got to build capacity within the people that you're asking to do this work.
Thank you Chair. I really appreciate the report from UCM that summarized the responses from First Nations and CAOs and, and government officials. And, you know, I think just highlighting some of the, some of the things in there is that, you know, I think broadly overall, we're in favor of reconciliation and, and doing reconciliation in a good way. And that, you know, there's support for faster and potentially simplifying permitting processes. And I think, you know, there's near unanimous concern that the proposed changes are rushed, policies are under, underdeveloped and future implementation process is potentially unfunded. Yeah, I think that's, that's the big thing. I think, you know, conceptually, I, I get behind this, I think it's the devil's in the details. How is this getting paid for? How is this actually going to be simpler? And, and where is the clarity for developers and property owners so that, you know, we aren't sort of reacting to things in a fear-based way? So I think my bigger comments here are, let's slow this down, let's, let's provide clarity to, to local governments, let's provide clarity to, to property owners, let's provide clarity to, to First Nations. Let's get this right rather than try and rush through something that, that people don't fully understand the applications for.
Director Sinnett.
Thank you Chair. So I had lots of comments, I sent a few to our CIO at the city, just on a couple of high-level things, I don't know whether she made any input on my comments. First question I have in the report at page two, it says that there's written feedback that we can do with respect to the proposed changes. Is that as a body here, we make it to the province? Do we do it to a different group? Like where do we send that feedback?
Yeah, so that's the November 14th, we will collectively send it from the SRD to the province.
Thank you. My, the highest level I can say is that there's a complete lack of administrative fairness that has been captured by this. We all have to deal with it when we make decisions, depending on the types of decisions we have, like we're doing public hearings and things, we have a group of rules that depend on the context. And we have to make decisions in a way that's fair, reviewable, people can appeal to courts, there's a process that's clearly laid out for every types of different levels of decisions. And that's not here. And that's, I think, the stress I'm hearing from Director Rice and his people, is that the concepts of administrative law, the concepts of natural justice that come from the common law that are enshrined in Section 7 of the Constitution are missing completely. There's no process. On top of this, because we're allowed to know our laws and there's little hints within the documentation that First Nation laws are going to be incorporated, how? How do we get First Nation laws incorporated so the public knows them? So are we going to take every First Nation law? Do we get notice of them? Do they get incorporated into regulations? Are they subject to review and then maybe court judicial review by our constitutional courts? Then it goes back to the First Nations and say they don't stand? I don't know the process, like these are missing pieces, like basically taking two government systems, one that we get a right to vote for, either at local or at the province, the Crown, the federal Crown, and another group that we don't get to vote for and we share power with them. Or we don't share power. I'm not quite sure who has the casting decision on these things. So, so this is tricky. I mean, if I vote for my local provincial government, presumably they're protecting my interest with respect to dealing with treaty nations. And that should be fine. And if we don't like it, we change governments and see how that goes later on. I mean, perhaps, I'm, I'm a bit concerned about that. There is a lot of conflict and that's where it's going to be the trouble. When we deal with our, our member nation here, they kind of know their treaty area. I don't know if they have other First Nations claiming into it, I doubt it. You do, okay, so you do have room for conflicts. And so we have room for conflicts all over the place. What do you do when you don't have a settled treaty area? We right now know the Comox and the Le Quito are not seeing eye to eye, we know the Hamalco doesn't see eye to eye. How is that process going to be managed in terms of the internal processes here? That's not really clearly laid out, it sort of conceives that everything will be figured out, but I could see there'd be multiple archaeologists coming in, trying to get to the bottom of what truth is, which will lead to more delay and more complications, either for us as developing roads or other infrastructure, or potentially it says on fee simple land. So I just don't think we have a process that's going to work it out nor an understanding of if we create what we call regulatory friction, which is the last thing Canada needs right now because we're so unproductive as a country as a whole, whether or not we have a method to address that regulatory friction and compensate the, the people that are going to be impacted by the necessity to get it right and how long that takes. I mean, that's pretty much the constant sort of background noise we see generally for a lot of decision-making in, in Canada at this point, whether it's environmental levels, whether it's on First Nation issues and various treaty rights. We, we've created a level of bubbling, you know, regulatory friction that we still have not yet figured out how to deal with because it's impacting productivity and it's creating a lot of difficulties for our country right now in terms of economic sustainability. And they don't address that, they don't address who's paying for it, they don't address how to deal with timeline requirements and they certainly don't deal with capacity of the archaeological branch. I don't think there is enough archaeologists to do every piece of fee simple land in this province and give you a certificate. On top of that, when you start relying on qualified experts or certain, you know, experts to do this work, you have to be very careful in creating a system that doesn't permit conflicts and again, is fair and open and transparent. And as you get to deal with individuals and fee simple rights, your, your requirements for fairness become court-like. So it becomes like, if I have to hire an expert who's going to give an opinion in court, they have to say they're unbiased, they have to say everything they looked at, they have to say what they're compensated at, every single thing has to be opened up and disclosed. So I just don't think we have, again, the capacity or the money to pay for this level of disclosure, to have fairness. Because one of the things you can see is that if someone is incentivized, because if you do say you've found an archaeological site, then perhaps it would require monitoring and further payment to the archaeologist? Or is there a different system you create where a, a new group comes in, that's an archaeological group that doesn't have a vested interest in making money from determining sites? So these are considerations. It's like, you wouldn't hire the doctor to be your expert who also gets to do the surgery and gets paid for the surgery, that just isn't really done, right? So I think there's probably a lot more I could mention because there's a lot of issues that I can see that. So one of the other ones was there's no permission within this thing to create local pathways and solutions to avoid a lot of issues. So if we were working, say with our local First Nations in Campbell River and we agreed that nothing from Alder Street all the way to Highway 19 was unlikely to be used by the First Nations in an extensive way, you could say designate that area as exempt from all the certificate processes. As opposed to like the oceanfront and all the things that happened that are likely going to be triggering. It's very similar to what the Comox people now have with their treaty, if anyone's gone to look at their website, they have a designated map, anything near creeks, anything near existing heritage sites, anything on the ocean require permits. It's not quite clear to me how that's going to work in terms of practicality, if people want to do a lot of development in those boundary areas below Oyster River, so, south, how that's going to work. But it adds an extra layer of administrative cost, it adds an extra layer of delay and hopefully it's going to be successful. I guess we'll see over time how that works. But that's, the other one of course is this concept that we don't get to know what's on our title, we don't get notice, that goes to the administrative fairness and natural justice issues. But the one that really bothers me is people don't understand how unique Camp BC's land title system is for reducing costs. We have a Torrens land system that is based on ship's registry out of England, which says if your title is there and what's on the title that's registered, that's all you have to worry about. We're about to sink that, it seems, because we're not requiring any of these designations to go on land titles. We're now going to create a secondary side system for land that seemingly wants us to do investigations to get information to the province that they don't have right now. So that they can enter it into the system, perhaps it goes untitled, perhaps it does not. Perhaps it goes untitled, perhaps it does not. And it seems to me that we are about to throw out one of the greatest strategic advantages that our province has in terms of land transfers and costs. You won't believe how much money I'm going to make as a lawyer doing land deals if I have to now research title like I expect I'm going to have to. And if I don't even have access, because they're not saying lawyers have access, they're saying realtors have access, I don't even think anyone's understood how many land transfers don't require a property sale sign going up. If you come into me and you're having a divorce and your husband owns the property and you own the property together as joint tenants, I can immediately, within 10 minutes, sever your tenancy by filing a transfer. Is that going to be stopped for divorce situations? Like, there's a lot of things that they have not thought through in terms of the needs to act quickly in other interest areas, family law, intestices, death, estate planning, all sorts of levels and title levels that we have. We have leases, we have life estates, we have different types of subleases going on. And I don't think anyone's turned and asked the people at the land title office or the various people who manage these different title systems, what are we going to do in each case? Are we going to require these permits? Or are we going to require archaeological sites, certificates? So again, I like the idea, but it seems to me that they are going to create a huge amount of lack of productivity and risk when it comes to land. Today, I've asked the Law Society how I'm going to do title reports in terms of security for people who lend money to borrowers or my clients who buy property, because I just don't know anymore. Like, I don't know on that and with respect to the recent Cowish decision. So that's a tricky thing because we're supposed to put our name and tell you, you've got something that's good and reliable. And I just don't know right now. But there you go. Hopefully, we can get to some sort of consolidation. I don't know if you guys are taking notes on some of these things.
We're recording it.
Okay.
But I think that I'm hopeful that you participate in the webinar tomorrow because those are things that need to be brought forward in the group.
Director Jacks.
Yes, thank you. All great questions and concerns, and it's the same ones we had when we started our process. And a lot of it carrying forward, you know, in regards to private properties and things like that. You know, we went to the Alliance and so we could work these kinds of things out with BC. But essentially, our treaty, we've tried to align with BC law and federal laws, like I said, just so everything can be streamlined and as easy as possible, you know, in regards to these types of subjects. As a treaty nation, you know, speaking for kayak checklist, when we started our treaty, we knew we had to do this year right off the bat. It's in place to protect those heritage sites. And a lot of those sites, we've handed down through oral knowledge, you know, and so that's where that info comes from. A lot of our, like, berry spots, our rivers for fishing, all those kinds of things, hunting areas. Because essentially, there was villages around these sites for seasonal and to carry out, you know, to be able to map everything, where everything is, and so that we, for tourism, protected areas and laying out in a map, you know, where people can go for kayak and where they can camp. You know, we're able to do all that kind of stuff because we have all the information in our area and our culturally sensitive sites that are really important to us, you know, like a whaler shrine, things like that, that, you know, that was like a secret society, that type of stuff. So it's really, really culturally sensitive stuff. So it's mainly for things like that and... Yeah, so and to like the work, you know, that's going to be done through the Alliance of BC Modern Treaty Nations. I think we will hear all of these questions coming up there as well, you know, especially in regards to funding. That's one of the things that are at the top of the list is funding, you know, in regards to these archaeological sites and, you know, the development around these sites and things like that. I know in our own heritage site act, like I spoke about for logging, you know, we have provisions and they're like, if there's a certain amount of CMTs in that area, then we'll say, okay, there's nothing there, we should go in there, we should look at it. If there's one or two, we won't really consider it a huge thing, but like I said, if it's a whaler shrine, then we're going to look at it. Or if it's a canoe site, things like that, old village sites. But the main thing is just protecting, you know, what may be found and how to deal with it. Our act also gives us the ability to repatriate stuff that's in museums, whether it's here in BC or over in Ottawa. We have stuff in museums all over the place, so that our act helps us to repatriate that kind of stuff. So now, now that we have that in place, we just need to build a place to put a museum. And that's our work that we're doing as a treaty society or as a treaty nation. The work is still ongoing. Like I said, now it's gone up to with the Treaty Alliance to work with BC and hopefully make it an easy process for everybody. A lot of treaty nations already have their act in place. And so a lot of the legwork is basically complete and just needs to throw it all together and so that it works for everybody. Our treaty not only protects those things, our people, but anybody that comes into our lands, anybody, whether, you know, whether you're a tourist or coming to buy property or something like that, you know, that's, it's to protect everybody, you know, and that's what our treaty is. We've tried to build it to do that. So now, the Heritage Act, you know, like I said, ours is, we're just waiting till we get more information from the Alliance and the work that's being done there. So hopefully, well, like I said, we all have the same questions that's been being asked here and hopefully we'll have a good outcome. Thank you.
Director of Senate.
Only because no one else is speaking. And I, there was more things that I had written notes about, so I just wanted to sort of say a couple positive things. There was a question, page 13, about improving the promotion of heritage values through these certificates and plaques. So when I was in Iceland at Thengalar National Park, they have a village site, and it's sort of the center of where the government started in Iceland. And they use augmented reality. So you literally pull up your phone and they have, almost looks like ghosts, walking through the site, showing what it was like 200 years ago. So that's, you know, instead of just having it sort of a sign and a plaque, there is technology now. So that's one positive one. The other one I don't, and it happens because I think a lot of these reports get to the very end and they've got some concepts. And one of the ones is about prohibiting possession, sale, and trade of heritage objects. And I could think of so many complications when it comes to that. I think we think generally we shouldn't have like a bunch of moneymakers making money on, you know, heritage stuff or encouraging looters and stuff like that. But you forget you have complicated family structures. You've got people who themselves who are on reserve right now or on treaty lands who are not governed by the province of British Columbia, and they can do whatever they want on their, on their own lands and give away what they want, how they want, because it's theirs and their families, and they can do what they want. Does it mean if I am gifted something by a member of First Nation and I walk off the land, I'm now covered by a new law? I don't know. These are the concepts that you have to admire and sort of, and I know family relationships are complicated. There are many mixed families, people who are treaty members, people who are First Nations status members and nod, who are not from the same groups. And family heirlooms and things like that move along these family things through inheritance and all sorts of stuff. So I get what they're doing, but I think it has to be really carefully scoped out what exactly they're trying to achieve here in terms of how they're going to prohibit sale, trade, and possession. Possession was the one that sort of caught my eye in terms of how you manage that. So that was another couple of comments. I'm sure I could find so many in here. I think, again, it's, we're trying to find a way to merge governments in a way that most people in Canada aren't familiar with and protect a cultural group in Canada that we have been poorly educated about. So you could go back and say, oh, if I'm running around England, there's lots of heritage sites, right? They dig something up, it's Stone Age, they dig up something, it's from the Romans, they dig up something. And we don't, that's really far in the past. But a lot of the sites we are protecting out here are not that far in the past. I mean, if there was a 2,000-year-old culture-modified tree, I'd be surprised, but maybe you could tell me I'm different. But they're not going to be that old. Then we have the 1846 deadline of finding sites, which requires, you know, dating, and there's disputes about what's happening at 1846, and that's important for various treaty and location rights. But what if we find a site that's 1,000 years old? Who gets the notice? Who decides? Like, how do we know? Like, is it people that exist today? Is it people like the Romans? Like, we don't call Italy if you're in England and say, what do we do? So I just don't know what the rules are going to be. So those are other unknowns. Thanks.
Okay, we got a little speaker's list going. We have Director Kerr, then Director Maweni, and then Director Colburn. Are you next? Okay. Director Kerr.
Thank you, Chair. And some good comments, good discussion, especially Susan's comments. And definitely having a grasp on the legal concerns about this is really important. And I think the bottom line is the lack of trust that majority of people, I would say in the province have right now in our provincial government to be handling this. I know in the 15 years that I've been in politics, I've been appointed every year by our council to participate in the treaty process. I was a representative, as were a number of councillors. And in that 15 years, we were never, ever invited. I have not attended a single meeting and I don't know anybody who has. I think a lot of that is the lack of recognition that our provincial and federal governments have of municipalities and, to a certain degree, our First Nations, because they consider nation-to-nation discussion more important than consulting with the municipality. And I think that through that process that I've watched for the last 15 years, I've seen a lot of lawyers, that they do come and make their report to us, you know, every term. I would say that their reports are traditionally very condescending and lacking in information. And, but, you know, to their benefit, their own benefits, they've all made careers out of it. But I don't think they've served the constituents of this SRD or the province very well. And the majority of this conversation, if not all this conversation, has taken place in camera, in back rooms, where municipalities are not aware and the people in this province are not aware what has been happening and what is happening. And then we just find out about it through policies that are rushed out like this in front of us with no consultation till after there's, you know, some pushback. But I think everybody knows that time for consultation is over because once you open the door, there's no shutting it again. So I'm not, you know, I'm not very optimistic about, you know, this whole, this whole process and the results of what we're going through right now. I think we're looking at, you know, the NDP government's socialist nihilistic vision of the future of this province. Those are my comments. I really appreciate Susan's comments, and I hope that we'll move forward, get some answers to some of those questions. Thank you.
Okay, we have Director Maweni and then Director Colburn.
Thank you, Chair. And I think it's important to remember that part of the reason for this updated act is really because there is a complex process right now where somebody might have to, a developer might have to have three different application forms, three different processes. And really, this is about trying to provide some streamlining for those, for that work. Really, I just wanted to sort of underline and circle back to what Director Colburn mentioned earlier, and that's around engagement and consultation with First Nations. And in this report that we have, it talks about asking developers or proponents of projects to do early engagement. And I think when we're talking about early engagement and then having to submit, you know, a report on what that record of early engagement and record of engagement is, I really have concerns with that sort of downloading to nations who are really at capacity or probably above capacity. And just, it sort of seems like a way of passing the buck. And I really have a big concern with that because it seems like maybe the ask is, oh, before you even come and request your permit, you know, engage with the nation. But we know, we see references when we have like land use decisions, we see referrals out to nations, and often they say they only reply to provincial and federal referrals, not local government referrals. And it just feels like this is just another ask, asking now, asking individual, individuals, businesses, developers, business proponents to start engaging with nations. And I really think that that's a, that doesn't seem like sustainable to me.
Director Colburn.
So we had a lot of comments here today about working together with treaty nations. What really concerns me is holding the interests of nations who have zero intention of being a treaty nation. That's just not the way that they're, that the movement is. And so it's concerns about holding that information. It is a nation's prerogative what they share and what they don't share for various reasons. That is their choice, that is their, those are their laws, those are their, that's their histories, the things that are spoken about, things that aren't, protected not. And so, yeah, we want to safeguard these sites. We want to, you know, help protect, but the mechanism may not be there in certain situations. So I just wanted to kind of put that one comment in. And also, has there been any conversation from the province about any kind of like permissible sites inventory? So we're talking about the rural and urban kind of divide, right? So Director Jack was saying there is things that, in their forestry planning and things like that, that they have, you know, with the overlapping interests being considered, because maybe there are other nations that are overlapping with other nations with other nations that have their own forestry planning, their own processes like working. So is there even as a start, maybe a permissible inventory? You know what?
there even as a start, maybe a permissible inventory? You know what I mean? Like, these are all kind of just things that are, that's, that's something that's kind of come up during this conversation and appreciating everyone sharing. So, I mean, we're, we're trying to work from nothing, so let's work from ground zero. Like, I don't, you know, it seems to me as kind of, as a, as a possible starting place, at least in a rural, with a rural lens. I don't know if it's something they've considered.
Director Rice.
Thank you, Chair. Just a comment with regards to engaging with nations before any work starts. This is the big problem that I see with my own constituencies. They don't know who to contact because there is, you know, overlapping interests. So how do you even start that process? And that's the part that's driving property owners in A R E D crazy. It's like, who do we call? There is no information. The other thing that I find confusing is that if you go back and talk to the province on this, the province says they want to drive the process of contacting nations so that they ensure that the property owners are consulting with the, the nations that have the interests. So again, there's an, a big conflict. And property owners just want to be able to get on with it. They don't have the time to be dealing through, you know, months of bureaucracy that doesn't seem to get them anywhere.
Well, just, I was listening to a CBC article, I think it was a couple of weeks ago. And basically, the commenter was saying, he was saying that the province typically, and it doesn't matter what political party, but typically they bring in legislation, it's, it's not thought out. No one has followed it through for process. And, and, and this is just another example. And he also commented on that the province is on record by saying they want to regulate more, to control more, which is going to cost more for people who want to build on land, purchase land, modify what they have. And it's going to eventually drive the costs up so high with all these regulations that no one's going to be able to move or do anything without expending a, a lot of money. And, you know, from my personal point, standpoint, I mean, I would like to, I think we need to preserve the heritage sites. And, and that is a pretty broad, broad scope. Not just First Nations heritage sites, but all of our heritage sites. They had this program, what was it, 90s, where they had, you know, you could, municipalities could declare a building a heritage site. Then all of a sudden, all the restrictions that were put on that building for refurbishment, rebuilding, even in some communities, the color of the paint you're going to use, I mean, it was just off the chart. So, so I think preservation of heritage sites and buildings and monuments and so forth are important. But I think the province needs to really take a serious look at, at the whole process. And no one has, no one has thought this through. And no one has said, okay, we have an application over here. What is the process? How does this work? Whether it's a First Nations or non-First Nations heritage site, how does this work? What is the process? What are the approvals? You know, so, so we, we don't have the, the gates that you need to look at getting through in order to process and complete your project. And I say, this, this is not me saying, this is what I heard on the radio, that this, this person was, and I wish I'd have, I wish I'd have paid more attention to what, to what he was saying, because he had, you know, several points. So I think this is a start. I just think that the province needs to go back to the drawing board and start designing the system and the process that we're supposed to follow. There's no design. They're trying to design it by getting input from people because they don't know. So I don't think holding a group meeting like tomorrow is going to get them the information they need to create the process. Because with an act, there's going to be regulations. So I think they're trying to design what the regulations are going to look like. And, you know, to be honest with you, I don't think they have any idea of what they need to be doing. And if they don't know, then how are we supposed to know? Each area is going to be different. You have treaty nations and you have nations who, who have decided that it's not, it's not in their best interest to become a treaty nation. I mean, you know, are there going to be different rules? So there's a lot of questions. Director Jack?
Yeah, we faced all those in our treaty. We have people that did not want to be part of the treaty and so they're not, they're still under what used to be INAC. We have citizens who are not members of the nation, but they live within the community. And, and maybe they're married then, or they were married then. So all those kinds of things, you know, we've touched on. But if the table would like to discuss, you know, like with, with Cayuga, I'd be happy to bring it forward and then, then we can take a look, you know, possibly take a look at our act and what it entails. We have a, have a meeting coming up this week here in Campbell River for, for a legislative and executive. And I could bring it, bring it to the table there. And if, if the table is willing and would like to learn, you know, what our act looks like, I'd be more than willing to, to work on that. It would be a start. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Davis online, you, it's your turn.
Thanks, Chair. Another thing, it's a bit of a sidebar, and I don't even know if this is the right venue for it. But in Tassus, while we're, we're doing a renovation of our museum right now, and it's going to be done by the end of December, and then we're going to start repopulating it with displays that we had. But we want to augment it. And thing is, I know people within our town that aren't First Nations that possess archaeological objects, things that they found on the beaches in this area, talking about grinding stones, obsidian blades, which obviously came through trade down the coast. Some interesting objects. And I'd, I'd love to get some of these things off these people and bring them into the museum. But I'm just curious about how, how we can do that. Obviously, well, I think obviously to me, I, I need to have those conversations with Mocha, Mushla First Nation, and as this is their traditional territory. And I've already initiated those conversations. But, but I'm, I'm curious as to how this act governs things like this, like possession and transfer of archaeological objects. So I, I don't know if that falls within this act, or it's just through the art branch or what. But, but this is something I'm starting to grapple with now, because I would like to see these objects acquired and preserved because, you know, often, well, eventually people pass on, and then where does the object go? Does it get passed on to a meaningful place? Or does it go back to First Nations? Or does it end up in the garbage? You know, and that's a real concern of mine to, to retain some sort of custody, either through us or through, or giving it back to Mocha, Mushla First Nations. So I don't know where I'm going with this. I'm just kind of flagging it as a concern that I'm grappling with right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Director Davis. And thank you, Director Jack. I do appreciate your input. So we're on receipt. So let's, let's receive this information. Director Colburn, you want to make a resolution for me?
I have a resolution, Chair.
Oh, sorry, we have a resolution already?
Oh, it's already been...
So we just have to vote on it. But I'm...
I'll, I'll be happy to vote.
Okay. So all those in favor, receive. Okay. And there's a supplementary...
Supplementary report, yes.
There's a supplementary report that we need to receive?
To receive, move to second.
Okay, Director Rice, second. All...
That's the one, the U B C M preliminary findings?
Yeah. Anyone opposed? It's carried.
So just if I may, Mr. Chair, for process wise, obviously, we've recorded the meeting. I will consolidate the concerns because of the deadline and the meeting schedule. The Chair instructs me that he'll be participating tomorrow. So we'll try and summarize concerns from the S R D that are raised then. And then we'll put that in a letter, make sure the, the Chair is supportive of it, and submit that to the province by the 14th.
So on that, we are, we're all registered to the session tomorrow.
Correct, yep.
So I know at the city, we're going to meet at the committee room and meet together and go over it. Or is, is there another, is there another meeting going to be held here? Or is there anybody, everybody's on their own?
We registered everyone individually. You can log on at home on your own if you like. If you want to come here, you can, but...
Well, I was just thinking, you know, we're going to be at the city, we're going to be at the committee room, if you want to join us, anyone. Saves everyone running around. Okay. Director Colburn?
And I just want to thank us for, I want, I want to thank you all for, for your comments today. I won't be able to be there tomorrow. The C A O has, our, our village C A O has responded, you know, and it's just, and I'm hoping that my council will listen to, you know, the recording of this and, and in turn, you know, reflect and, and contribute their own. But I'm glad for the opportunity here because I won't be able to be there tomorrow. And so the opportunity to do that, to have this meeting and do that in writing as well and kind of consolidate all of that is really appreciated. This is, you know, a region at work that has multiple concerns from many different perspectives. And I, I just, thank you.
Just want to clarify some things that I said about implementation of, of this process. When the province moved from, the, our province moved, went from the municipal act to the local lemon act, and then from the local lemon act, it created for the municipalities a community charter. And it took years. And there was a lot of discussion. And the process and procedures were all put in place. Then we all reviewed them together. Modifications were made. But from what I can see, that has not happened. And that is our, our roadblock. This is our, our problem. It's not been thought out. It's not, you know, you have to follow through, you know, follow process, have to follow it all the way through to the end. What are the hiccups? What are the problems? And you do that by discussion, yes. But you don't do it this fast. I think a lot more work needs to be done. I'm in favor of the heritage and looking after our heritage. It's going to be, I think, a great tourism thing to have our heritage issues sorted out, whether it's First Nations or non-First Nations. So, but they need to follow through. They need to, to model it to find out how this is supposed to work or how they want it to work. So that's just my comments. I'm frustrated with this, with this lack of work. Director Jack?
Yes, just in, just in closing, thanks, everyone, for listening to me today. And, you know, I look forward to working together, you know. We signed our treaty in 2011 and we've been working on this process ever since, you know. And so it's a long process and, and it's, can be heavy at times. And we've seen that. We've been through it all. And we've heard all the same questions you guys are asking from, if not our own people, but, you know, the surrounding community as well. And so it just, great to, to hear everybody's, you know, concerns and everything. And I'm looking forward to, you know, moving forward and seeing what the outcome is in the end. Thank you.
Move termination? Second.
Turn, okay, it's moved to second. Do we terminate the meeting? On staff's behalf, they want us to eat the lunch here. That's been brought in. It's too much for our staff to absorb. So they don't want us leaving before having lunch. Okay, all in favor of adjournment? And, okay, it's carried. Meeting's adjourned.
Thanks, everybody. Bye.
Bye, Martin.
Bye, Martin.
See you, Martin.